All right, folks, I'm gonna call the workshop to order. I've got 1:31 is the time. So let's go ahead and call our workshop on the Basin Management Action Program, or Action Plan, rather, to order. It's October 6, 2020, at 1:31. Mr. DeJale, go ahead and introduce the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you have announced, this is an update on our Basin Management Action Plan. And I'm gonna ask Dave Hardner to make some opening remarks before we turn it over to Roland Adelain for the presentation. Dave?
Thank you, Roger. Good morning, Commissioners, or good afternoon, Commissioners. You got me messed up already.[42.12][42.12](Laughter). As Roger said, we're gonna talk about the Basin Management Action Plan update. Through this board's policy and direction, Lee County has been engaged in a proactive approach regarding water quality since the early 2000s. That policy direction has allowed for us to have numerous projects, land acquisitions, as well as preventive measures that were established to help mitigate some of the contaminants that impede our waterways. Some events that we also faced happened in 2018, which is the blue-green algae and red-tide events. And that just shows how vulnerable we still are, and that we have some work to do, both locally and regionally. And to that point, Governor DeSantis ordered an update of the restoration plans for all water bodies impacting South Florida communities, including the Kalusahatchee Basin Management Action Plan. So this afternoon, we're gonna go over that update. We're also gonna give you a summary of those findings, and we're also gonna talk about some of the things that we've done to either meet or exceed those obligations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Roland.
Thank you, Dave. Well, today, we're gonna give you an update on the Basin Management Action Plan. We have three of them all together. So, starting with the agenda, we'll jump right into the update, and then we're gonna step back and look at the process. How does the water management, or actually DEP, assess water quality, and how waters become impaired, and what's a TMDL and a BMAP? And next, we'll go into how do we get there? So we're gonna look at the proactive approach that you all have taken to address source tracking, source control projects and programs, and land purchase, and further that effort. And then we're gonna focus on the future, what steps we should be taking here on out regarding water quality. So you've taken some proactive measures in the past, Conservation 2020. If you recall, we updated the ranking criteria to focus on water quality. Any given year, you also approved many CIP projects for water quality, like filter marshes, retention facilities, flowways. You've also initiated a Norfolk Myers septic study, and then more recently, the countywide source-tracking effort. Today, we're gonna go over the Basin Management Action Plan. We'll call it BMAP from here on out, but I'll probably use it interchangeably, just 'cause it's a habit. And then later down the road, in, I guess, January, we're gonna discuss the wastewater master plan that's addressing septic systems. We've been down the water quality path for years, a long time. Back in 1991, our surface water master plan. Those are typically addressing flood issues, but the first time we started addressing water quality issues in our watersheds. And at that time, we also initiated a water quality monitoring network throughout the county. In 97, we got our NPDS MS4 permit. That's a jumble of acronyms there, but basically, that's our permit for our stormwater system, our canals and drainage system in the county, fulfillment of the Clean Water Act, which was initiated by EPA and eventually delegated to the state. We initiated the Conservation 2020 program in 1998. Then 2005, we built our first bona fide water quality project. We built the Ten Mile Canal Filter Marsh, and that was conjunction with the John Yarborough Linnair Park. And then 2007, we adopted fertilizer ordinance. And then 2008, TMDL for total nitrogen was adopted for Hendry Creek and Imperial River. And then 2009, in December, they adopted the TMDL for total nitrogen for Kalusahatchee estuary. Then subsequently, the BMAPs were adopted in 2012. Then we initiated the bacteria study in Norfolk Myers in 2017. Met a major milestone for conservation land acquisition, 30,000 acres in 2020. Also this year, DEP, which is the bulk of this presentation, updated the Kalusahatchee Basin Management Action Plan, and that provided new load reduction allocations for us and other stakeholders. And then more recently, the statewide assessment report was completed, and that gave us new project credits. So a couple questions to ask, and we'll come back to this at the end of the presentation, is, should staff proceed with the current work plan addressing water quality impairments? And two, are there any other issues you would like to address or add?
Yeah, and a work session, real casual, just if you have questions, jump in.
Back up one frame, would you please, Roland?
Yes.
And go back to between 98 and 05. That was a time in there somewhere that we, Lee County, sent $10 million to the Water Management District to participate in the purchase of that land in Glades County for water quality treatment. Is that something that we can consider? I would think as a step taken.
The BOMA project?
I'm sorry?
Was that the BOMA project?
BOMA.
It is a significant acquisition for us, and we hopefully eventually, or the district will eventually generate a large project out of that.
Can you give me a quick summary of where that project stands? Because that $10 million, we bought the stuff, and then nothing happened for, up until now.
Right, sure. The Water Management District just completed a third year of their testing. They built these, they call them mesocosms, they're little test plots. They're basically large tanks that they put 12 of them, and they tested different technologies for water quality treatment, with the idea of coming up with the best formula for removing nitrogen in the watershed. They had very mixed results, even after three years of study, because the organic concentration of nitrogen in the water column is very difficult to remove. And so they were trying to now look at other technologies. So instead of going to that next step to start building a STA, or whatever you wanna call it in that area, they need to do a little bit more science to determine what the best application is. So they are moving forward, looking at some other pretreatment options. Then hopefully with that, they will go to that next step. I heard some discussions from the Water Management District that they would at least like to start storing water on that project, and creating one of these FEBs, or Flow Equalization Basins, just so that they're utilizing land to store water. There's some inherent water quality benefit to that, but they're still addressing that. So that's the status right now.
So land was purchased, but they're still trying to figure out what to do with it? Is that what I hear you saying?
Specifics before they make that huge investment on an actual large project, because it's 1,200 acres of a water quality feature that they are going to build for all of us, or all on behalf of them.
Well, I don't know what to, I don't know what we could've done differently at the time, but it seemed very important that we commit the $10 million. It was a time when the recession was hitting, but we had the dollars available. Water was a priority then, as it is now. So we bought the land, and it was though there were great plans immediately available, and all they needed was our $10 million to get going on it. And here it is, a decade or better later, and still, we're still waiting for, is there any buttons we can push? Is there an angry letter that we can fire off under the chairman's signature? Anything? That's $10 million. I, you know, just, it's another one of those great studies you hear me talking about up on a shelf somewhere, but it was a $10 million effort. Nothing yet.
We do include that as part of our legislative agenda every year to support funding for projects on that BOMA piece of land. I think that's one thing. But I agree, I mean, there's something, we own the land, it's a, maybe that's one of the questions we get to towards the end there, about anything else the board would like to see. Maybe that's something we start to steer towards.
Like get it back on the front burner.
Yeah.
Reason to bring it there, and we have the land now.
Yeah.
On Commissioner Mann's point, and I'm not sure if Roland can even answer this or not, being that the C-43 is being constructed now in that same area, is there actually gonna be a need for this project? Because, you know, 10 years ago, or 12 years ago this property was acquired, that was not even being thought of. So is it even gonna be an element to be used after the completion of the C-43?
To be honest, I think there will be.
Point, if I can just add on to a little bit. When C-43 was planned, and the construction was begun, it did not, it was a water quantity project. It's only been since this new governor came on, and he said, he joined others that were saying, we ought to do quality study as well. And yes, that's what BOMA started out to be, a water quality thing. So if somebody should, you've asked the right question. Since C-43 is now going to include water quality improvement, should there be, should we look for another purpose and redefine what we're doing with the BOMA?
Either 2020, or some type of conservation, or something, or repurpose it, you know, for something, unless there's credits we need off the property.
But that's a very good point, that if we're doing quality studies in a different way, in a much bigger way, on the C-43 project, potentially, we don't know for sure what they're doing there yet. That has not been defined. But I don't want that $10 million, just as $10 million we threw away, and it'll sit over there forever. Let's do something with it.
Commissioner, or County Manager?
Commissioner, you raise a good point. We haven't talked about that project in quite a while, so what we will do is we'll pull out the original agreement with Water Management District, see what it says, see what the deliverables are supposed to be, if they have or have not been, then we can, we can...
That's a good start.
Yeah, then we'll put together some recommendations for you.
I wanna retract on that side. I mentioned conservation, but, you know, it wouldn't be part of our conservation program because it's in Hendry County, but repurpose it back to Hendry County, get it back on their tax roll, maybe they can use it for a conservation program in Hendry County. We could receive some funds back to use those funds for local water quality projects, and let Hendry County get it back on the tax roll for conservation or a water quality project there.
Technically, I think it's Glades County.
Is it Glades? Okay.
And the Glades County Commissioners, if you see them at the Florida Association of County meetings, they'll still mention it to you, you know, they took all that land off our tax roll.[709.61][709.61](Laughter).
Yeah, they were getting about $400 a year on taxes on that land.
I know.
It was agriculture and zero assessment.
That's true.
But you're right, they'll still grip it about it.
Go ahead.
Questions, Andy Lee?
This plan here, you know, it's Lee County, but you often hear water doesn't have boundaries. So can you just tell me how this fits in with the plans, either for Collier, Charlotte? Is this being looked at, studied collectively?
Yes, sir. And actually, we'll get into a little bit about the expansion, this BMAP expansion, the boundaries have actually expanded beyond Lee County, and so that's, part of that will be in the presentation.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, Roland, why don't you continue on then?
We already got questions going, that's good. So jumping right into the BMAP update for Everglades West Coast, there were two water bodies that were addressed by DEP, on Everglades West Coast, Imperial River and Hendry Creek. In Imperial River, we are obligated to remove 1,556 pounds of total nitrogen per year, and we've achieved about 1,600, so we've met our obligations in Imperial River. Hendry Creek, we're obligated to remove 10,000 pounds of total nitrogen per year, and we're just under 6,700 pounds per year. So we're about 66% completed. However, with our projects that we have planned, we should be able to meet that in due fashion. We still are ahead of the game. These BMAPs are typically a 20-year plan. We're about halfway through the time period. So again, it's our proactive measures, the projects you approved, and the programs you approved, have got us to this achievement in these two basins. And now, when you build a project, too, they're assumed to deliver load reductions every year. It's like building a treatment plant, so it's not just one year, you're done, and it's good for 20, you have, it continues to take care of the loading as it goes through the system each year. And so on to the Kalusahatchee, this is the bulk of the presentation. Governor's Executive Order 19-12, required DEP to update the BMAP. And significant changes there were, they expanded the basin boundary to the east. We were at Franklin Locks, now goes all the way to Lake Okeechobee. Developed a new modeling analysis. This was really significant. There were some problems with the old model that was pointed out by many of the stakeholders. They've added new land use classifications, and a bunch more new data, so it's much more calibrated now. And that resulted in updated load reduction allocations to stakeholders like us, and cities, and water control districts. It also revised the credit allocation for the projects and programs that we completed. And also gets into identifying specific management actions that should be taking place to also achieve further nutrient reductions. And finally, it also expanded the monitoring network, South Florida Water Management District and DEP put in monitoring gauges east of Franklin Locks into Hendry and Glades County to start picking up the loading from those areas east of Lee County. So here's the basin boundary, as you mentioned, yeah, it goes now well beyond, for the Kalusahatchee anyway, it addresses Lee County, parts of Charlotte, Hendry and Glades. Now, since it's Kalusahatchee, it would not pick up anything Collier. Collier, if we're addressing anything perhaps in the southern basins, but this is specifically for the Kalusahatchee BMAP. And so that basin boundary, the bold there is the new boundary. And those green areas are watersheds, or subwatersheds within the Kalusahatchee, they actually have their own impairments in TMDLs. And so part of that analysis shows that there's nearly 4 million pounds of total nitrogen that makes its way to the estuary, on average, 4 million pounds. And so this table depicts that allocate, or not the allocation, but the contribution for the various stakeholders in that watershed. And again, it's this expanded basin. Agriculture, 78% of the loading comes from agriculture. It's not surprising, because they're probably about that much of the land use in that expanded boundary, too. Next on the list is Lee County at 6.5%. Lee High Acres at 4.5, and City of Cape Coral 4.3, and so on and so forth, and you can see how well, how much it diminishes from beyond that. So, part of the reductions that we're required to do is, the TMDL for the title Kalusahatchee is, you had to remove 23% of the total nitrogen making its way to the estuary. So for agriculture, that equates to over 700,000 pounds of total nitrogen that has to be removed. So answer back your question, is there other needs in that basin? There certainly is. Agriculture is gonna probably need to depend on not only their efforts they put in place, but these regional projects to the east of us. So there may be some opportunities there. Well, anyway, Lee County's obligation is a little over 59,000 pounds due to this new modeling analysis. And to make point here, the previous BMAP, the previous study, had us at 144,000 pounds. So that's a significant drop from what the previous BMAP was, just to take note of that.
So Roland, if I could jump in, does this kinda change the way we look at things? One of the things we would always talk about when we would talk about the Lake Okeechobee flows and things like that, we would talk about how a lot of the nutrient loading actually takes place west of Lake Okeechobee and from the basin itself. Have we now learned more about what specifically that loading looks like in between the lake and the actual Gulf of Mexico there?
Yes, I mean, that's what this really does, and it also looks at the loading from out of Lake Okeechobee into the system, too. So it's a better accounting of all those contributors to the loading, the tire, you know, pie of water quality.
Can you go back a slide? So do we have Lake Okeechobee's loading listed on there?
It's based on the agricultural land use around, so they're not by basins, but by entity, stakeholder.
Okay, so we all know, or do we know, like, what part of that agriculture is like the ag that's in Glades and Hendry County on the river versus the ag that's...
They would have that broken down. We could get that information for you.
Okay, just curious, okay.
But you could see that previous slide, those green blotches, you could tell there's certainly large ag pieces west of agriculture, or west of Lake Okeechobee, they're contributing to that loading significantly. And so moving on to credits. So we had the previous Basin Management Action Plan analysis. The total reductions required were a little over 144,000 pounds a year, and we got credit for the projects we did, around 57,000 pounds. So we're a little over a third of the way, 39% of the way there, and that's what we had presented to you last time they gave us the BMAP update. Now with the new one, our reduction requirement, a little over 59,000, and we got credit for 145,000 pounds of load reduction. So the good news is, Lee County's total nitrogen obligation to Kalusahatchee has been met through existing policy and your proactive measures. Now, we'll get a little bit into the credits, or why those credits were so far off, and that's my next few slides here.
This is amazing, though. I mean, when you think about what this slide means, we had talked about this for several years, and I remember Commissioner Kiker really very clearly right now talking about how we could have $60 million worth of obligation or projects that we had to build to meet these obligations, and you're saying now that they've remodeled it and looked at it, we've exceeded?
Yes.
Wow.
And critical to that was the amount of credits they gave us for restoring 2020 parcels. They were hardly giving us anything before, other than you own it, and that's great, but the fact that we're restoring those parcels and restoring hydrology on those really provide a big water quality benefit. So we got a lot of credit there. We're gonna go over some of these highlighted ones. Some of them also, they were looking at just the footprint of the project, and not looking at the area that drains to those projects. So that was, there was orders of magnitude error in some of these, and we'd pointed those out before. Now we got a better assessment, go through some of those. Like this one, Algrade Stormwater Park, at the bottom of the page, it's Bayshore Creek. It gets pumped from Bayshore Creek through this pump station, and gets delivered in that retention-detention facility to the upper left there on your screen. You can see the water coming, bubbling out, that's, we got two pumps, one is running there. So it goes into this facility, kind of as a pretreatment, moves around like kind of a circuitous route through this retention facility. Then it gets placed back into this wetland. This wetland was dehydrated, had a bunch of willows in it, is in really need of water. So we added added benefit. This also provides enhanced water quality, but also enhance the wetlands. Also provides another benefit, flood protection. We're gonna talk about that in November, about some more flood mitigation efforts. But this provides storage in that basin as well. So this water gets cleaned up, and then it goes back out to Bayshore, or Bayshore Creek. Some other projects, we got enhanced benefits. This flowway that we built in, there's a spinoff of Prairie Pines Reserve, that's kind of a connection to Gator Slough. We built this flowway. It looks kinda rough there, because it hasn't been vegetated yet, but it's all enhanced now, wetland plants, and on top of the screen, here's a water control structure. Oops, wrong way. Kalusahatchee Creeks Preserve, a very large 2020 parcel, again, restoration of the original hydrology got us a ton of credits. Billy's Creek, this is 2020 purchase, City of Fort Myers built it, but we got 50% of the credits because of the purchase of the property. Powell Creek Filter Marsh, this is a 2020 piece sandwiched between two mobile home parks, provide regional water quality benefits. Victor's Creek Restoration picks up a large agricultural watershed for cleanup. Whiskey Creek Weir Construction, this is, you know, the Whiskey Creek subdivision was basically free-flowing into a tide, and this construction, this weir and this lake provided sort of retention-detention of that area, that water quality. They weren't open for navigation anyway, so it didn't impact anybody's navigational access. Then Prairie Pines Restoration, very large projects, kind of at the headwaters of Gator Slough, Daughtry Creek, and Powell Creek. This berm, this storage area, not only provides water quality, but also provides flood protection benefit downstream of Del Prado Extension. So this is the rest of the projects, some 45 projects that we got credits for. Again, errors in calculations, but also, the biggest one was, they gave us additional credit for just land restoration, which is, which is great. I mean, not just, that's a very important feature. The BMAP also looks at sources, focuses on specific sources that are problematic in the basin. Agriculture, the upper left there, they're under, seeing that they're 80% of the load, or 78% of the loading, they're required to put in best management practices. It's an enrollment program through FDAC, Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. They're enhancing their manuals for BMPs, and how they manage their water and fertilizer use. They have manuals for cowcalf, citrus, row crops, vegetables, and they need to adhere to those, and also monitor. And now, they're also gonna be inspected no less than once every other year by FDACs. Upper right there, septic systems, hot topic. The BMAP requires a master wastewater treatment feasibility analysis that addresses the loading from septic systems, and what our 20-year game plan is there. Lee County Utilities has put in a budget of $750,000 to complete that effort, and that's deadlines in January 2023. Lower right, stormwater, new regulations coming on the forefront. If you build, design something, develop something in Lee County, your criteria's gonna change, or if we build something. The old design criteria was based in 82, early 80s, and it handled sediments. Well, they didn't address nutrients back then, and so now the new criteria's gonna change. Water Management District and DEP are holding public workshops on that. I'm sure the local engineers will be very interested, and developers will be very interested in the outcome of that. And then wastewater treatment, there's a full criteria for wastewater treatment plants in the new BMAP as well. A little bit about the, what DEP looks at, and how you get assessed, or water quality issues. You start at the upper left there, sampling, the idea is you collect a water quality sample, it's compared to state standards, and if it's impaired, then they develop a TMDL. We're gonna get into the details and definitions in a minute here. If there's a TMDL, the load reduction criteria, then they put it into a Basin Management Action Plan, which is a plan for restoration. And then, but the idea is, if you clean the water, or put these projects in place, the sampling should show betterment of your water quality. So it goes full cycle here. Hopefully, you don't have to follow this cycle too many times. So a little bit detail on the watershed assessment, impaired waters. The core function there is to use the best available information, identify water bodies and water segments that are not meeting water quality standards and designated uses. Lee County, most of those are Class III water, fishing, fish consumption and recreation. So if you fish and eat the fish, and play and swim in the water, you shouldn't get sex. So that's kind of what our standards are here. And DEP has a kind of a cycle, they look at all, they have 29 major basins in the state of Florida, and they're running through these in a five-year cycle. And you can imagine all the water bodies in the state, and how they're having to address the water quality in each and one of these. So the resources are thin, but they've got to the Kalusahatchee, and that's where we're at. Little bit about our efforts, our efforts on water quality sampling. This is a really robust sampling network, and it's done by not just Lee County, but many other partners and agencies in our area. The red circles depict Lee County lab, the blue squares are City of Cape Coral, purple squares are Sayanabelle, pink diamonds are Sanibel Captiva Conservation Foundation. They all have their interests in various issues that they're dealing with, but the beauty of this, all this is uploaded to DEP's website and their database, so we can all use it, and use it for management decisions on water quality and impairments.
Yeah, Commissioner Penegras.
Good. This map is really important, because I know Commissioner Mann brought this up before, about us, when we talk about projects and studies, about everybody talking, working together. This map shows where, you know, what so many agencies are doing with water, with water quality, because we're always hearing different groups want to know why we talk to this group, why we talk to this group. And this shows how much interaction there is between all the different groups. This is, trying to get the right message out's a challenge a lot of times with the media and stuff, but this shows there's a lot of interaction with all the different groups and agencies. There's a lot of study into water going on up there.
Chairman, I want to thank Commissioner Penegras for having heard my previous pleas about this very subject, and that was my point, that, and I hadn't seen it as perfectly placed, as this chart shows how many test sites there are. But Cecil, I'm not convinced yet that we have achieved the dialogue necessary, or that could be, to get the best out of this, that if all these people were talking together, and that's what I don't understand yet. What do we got, 20 agencies here, private and public, all gathering water samples?
Right.
But are they comparing them, and say, okay, what is the damage caused by this, or what are we to conclude from this year's testing? And these waters in the northeast corner of the county, as opposed to the southwest, that's producing so, so-and-so, some of these are saltwater, some are fresh? There's a lot of information being garnered here, but what are the conclusions? And that's what I asked Roland three or four years ago, and he says, okay, well, they're getting some, but I thank you for understanding what my point is.
You're right, I mean, you're right, and you're still right, because the challenge has been, I've seen the last couple of years, you pick a project, for example, you can pick a body of water out, let's say Billy's Creek, and you'll get, you invite certain groups to come out there to test the water, look at it, they won't show up. They don't want to be part of it. And you have other groups, DEP, our department, Natural Resources, they come out and they do the study, that other people, they don't want to see those results, they'll focus on something over here. This is, it's unfortunate, but they are doing it, the testing's been done. I mean, there's issues right now at Manuel's Branch, going off McGregor to the river, so it's being tested, it's just trying to get everybody and having the same agreement on the cause of the issue, is trying to get everybody to be, yeah, there's, here's the data, but nobody wants to say where it's actually coming from. And that's the frustration, I think. The staff has to do it, because our staff is trying to work with the different groups and get them involved, but depends on the day of the week, or the month. But depends on the day of the week or the month, if they show up or not. That's the frustration. But you're right, when you brought that up a couple of years ago.
I've.
Everybody's talking about it, but nobody wants to, you know, it needs to be shared.
I've stopped on North River Road where I live, where I see a county truck and two little ladies crawling around with their white boots and their white shirt with Lee County on it. And there, there were the little sample takers, and, and I say, what are y'all taking samples for? It's, oh, well, we're testing for so and so. Okay, and, and then where does that information go? Well, they don't, because they're the tester takers. How do we get all of those dots to talk to one another? I want to, those dots, when they're taking that water up, somebody's got to be asking the question, why am I taking this water up? What do I want to learn from this? And, and does it, it can't be the same question way up river where it's pure fresh water as opposed to all those that the Sanibel Captiva Foundation is, is contributing in the salt water and up and down Pine Island Sound. I just, Roland, I have, I don't know yet, I don't understand the dialogue, I don't understand the questions being asked, and I don't know who's collecting the answers. And then I don't know how that gets into a staff recommendation to the policymakers as to what we should be doing. And you're talking real fast and real good, and you understand it because you live and breathe this stuff. I, I live and breathe, but not as intensely as you. So those questions that I just spelled out, I still at some point need some answer to, so that I understand as a policymaker what it is we're asking y'all to do, or collectively all of us to work together to accomplish.
I think, I think the other part of this is, is that if these questions persist and money being spent through whatever sources, and we're not getting the information back, I think the next time we're asked to contribute to something or forward something for another year, we should be expecting something back that we can look at. What are the results? What are the finite results? And do they match up? So we, we, with the best of intentions, we fund things. Are we getting an answer back for what we're funding? Thanks for your.
You're reading me. Cecil, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think Roland, can you help us with this conversation?
Well, let's, I can say, it is certainly a collaborative effort, and we, we meet with our partners, not just members of the testing community and lab directors and such, but we also, we also congregate in these many studies like the Kaluahatchee Watershed Protection Plan, or various Charlotte Harbor efforts, a collection of scientists and say, hey, we've got this information. What you don't have on this map is the frequency and what parameters are each and one they're testing. Some cases there for definitely self-interest, like Cape Coral obviously wants to know what the water quality is like in their canals, so that they can take appropriate actions if they have water quality issues, like we have, the algae blooms. Same for us. We test almost every creek and stream in Lee County. We want to have an understanding of what our water quality is going into the Kaluahatchee, Charlotte Harbor, or Estero Bay, so we can, these projects, as you know, are very expensive. So we want to make sure we're going after the hot spots or the problems that are problematic, instead of just, that's just, we got this property here, why don't we put a water quality project? So it gives you not only planning purposes of where projects are, but also gives you a level of comfort, hey, this is the quality of our water, this is what the people, many people use the water here for recreation and fishing. And so it gives you kind of a sentinel, what our water quality is like. So it's, again, what's missing is what their use is for. Obviously, Sanibel Captiva Conservation Foundation, obviously, they have a much more coastal type of interest. DEP has sites that they're obligated to do to put in some, you know, fill in some of the blanks. There's also a lot of testing going on from non-certified labs, too. We, they're not up on here. So this is those that have certified QAQC type lab, lab kind of work done.
One last wine.
Sure.
What is frustrating to me, and I'm sure it must be to y'all, too, is every time I'll pick on the news press, I'll pick on, I'll give them credit for writing the stories as often as they do, we'll have, there'll be, you know, what, half dozen major water stories a year? And they're quoting this water quality group and this other water quality group, or these advocacy groups, all of saying, the samples we've seen here have been shown that they may cause breathing problems in humans if exposed at some level. But they've never pointed out that they're, okay, we're at that level because of this testing that we've seen. They always say may cause, and it drives me nuts, because it's blaming us for something that I'm not sure has occurred yet at that intensity. But, and I look at one of these things and says, we should be able to answer that. How close are we to the may cause? We're, we're looking right at the septic tanks. You shot past that two charts back. We're looking at that, and every now and then we get an uptake or uptick in fecal cholerol test results. And then we'll get another story. And they may cause, but they haven't shown that they did cause. We keep waving all these flags, these scary flags, that something bad's about to happen. But look at all the stuff we're doing here, and it needs ultimately to relate to what the public's been hearing and what's been scaring them. Are we addressing that? And I can't answer that question. I've been doing this longer than any of y'all, and I should be able to answer, because it's been a priority of mine, and there's still so many unanswered questions and unasked questions that these indicate need to be asked, and we need to be doing something meaningful, or it's just more studies in that up on the shelf.
Commissioner, I think it's fair to say that we're doing a tremendous amount of meaningful work, because as a result of the testing, we have built millions of dollars in water quality projects. So we're, we're doing our part over time to improve water quality. To say that there's a coordinated effort among all of these agencies to come up with a single plan for future water quality, you know, that, we can't say that. But all of this data is being loaded into FDIP database and is being used by scientists to, to study the problem and, and, and to determine what projects need to be done and, you know, how the laws get adjusted from time to time. But I think you can say with absolute confidence that the dollars that County Commission is investing in water testing and, and all of these projects is, there's a direct correlation between improved water quality and, and the dollars being invested by Lee County.
I wouldn't question that for a minute, Roger. I wouldn't. Every time he comes forth on another project that we adopt, year after year, budget after budget, we look at and we sort of review and we say, okay, let's go ahead and do it. And then the federal government gives us credit, as we're patting ourselves on the back for here, and I think it's well deserved. But that does not stop these stories that continue year after year with the, with the water quality advocates that are saying, we are still threatened and we're not doing what we should be doing. And I, I don't, I don't have the answers that I, I feel like that I, I need right now. I don't want a single plan, and that is not possible to have a single plan. There'll be an estuary, estuaries plan, there'll be a off-the-gulf plan, there'll be a way up the river plan in the pure freshwater, there'll be all kinds of different plans. There'll be a septic tank plan in North Fort Myers. All those are different. But just seeing that shotgun blast up there doesn't give me the comfort yet. Back to Cecil, thank you again. I don't know that we're doing everything we can to make certain we're not duplicating or that we're not taking advantage of the information that we're gathering collectively for assessment.
I think, I think you raise some really great points, Commissioner Man. One of the scenarios I'd like to explore real quickly, Roland, how, briefly, quickly, how often do you get together with your counterparts inside the municipalities and with some of these other agencies?
Well, we have quarterly NPDS MS4 permit, co-permittees, there are all these folks that are stakeholders, that they have quarterly, I believe. They get them talking about testing Kaluahatchee Watershed Protection Plan, it just kicked off. BMAP, the Basin Management Action Plan, that's probably biannually. I'm not sure how often my lab director meets with other lab directors, but I'm sure it's more frequent. You know, what, I guess the case I'm building here is, this is the state's program, and we're providing them data through their data set. They're the responsible entity to, hey, you're either meeting it, you're not meeting it. If you're not meeting it, we have a plan for you, and you will, and this is what you're going to be doing, or you're going to show us how you're going to clean up the water. So it's, we're not necessarily, though we have been proactive, and it's paid off significantly, the state is, that's their responsible entity. They are the water quality agency on behalf of the state of Florida, and we comply with their criteria. So this information goes to their set, and they're going to go, they're going to sort through this, you know, magnitude of analysis here or testing, and they'll say, well, you're either not meeting the standard or that standard, and you've got to come up with a plan on how you're cleaning.
And the DAE is the DEP.
DEP.
Gotcha. Okay, so let's talk about this. So if I'm hearing the, the problem, and I've heard it from now more than one of us, too, and it's one that I've noticed as well, is I think, I think a big concern that we have is the duplication of efforts, and we want to see collaboration with our city partners and the other agencies that are out there that also want to improve water quality. So one of the things I've noticed is, we'll, we'll be interested, and we'll be doing a project to improve water quality, but maybe the city of Cape Coral just not picking on anybody, but maybe they haven't heard of that project, and they'll also then embark on a study to study pretty much the same thing we're studying. How, how could we solve that problem so that instead of duplicating efforts, we're working together? One idea I had, and I'd be interested to hear your take on this scenario, is what about something similar to what we do with transportation, where we have the Metropolitan Planning Organization? They have a technical advisory committee where the DOT staffs at the different cities and the county get together and talk technically about how their infrastructure works, the transportation infrastructure works. Could we talk technically about natural resources infrastructure and studies that are going on and compare notes and, and maybe have a more collaborative function and maybe meet, like you said, either quarterly or whatever? What do you think about that scenario?
I think anytime you have, communication is certainly advantageous to everybody. I mean, it's, we all kind of know each other, what everybody's doing, so we, we either run into them in these various meetings, but there, I don't see any harm to doing something like that, that, you know, if there is a perception that there's duplication.
And then somehow we'd have to get that readout back to the policymakers then, too, so that the council people and the commissioners also know then not to duplicate each other's efforts. We know what each other's working on. We could maybe even have, not as often as the NPO, but maybe a twice a year, quarterly water, you know, workshop with everybody.
I appreciate that suggestion. I think that's, that's a good goal from this discussion, to see if we can improve that communication by the policymakers sitting down from time to time. Asking that question, are we getting, what is, what is this, what do you want us to do with this information you guys are providing us? And maybe you bring in somebody from DEP. You know, they're, I appreciate you putting that up there and explaining that they're the ones that are supposed to be making sense out of all this, but I'm not, I'm not hearing from them, I'm not reading that annual or quarterly or semi-annual report. I don't know what, well, you are, because we're getting, to the extent there's TMDL credits, y'all deal with it directly. But these advocates that are continuing to criticize the lack of action on the part of government, I just can't, somehow there's a, there's a total barricade of communication for them to be so critical constantly and us to be doing so much with 250 locations of testing, that does find its way into our budget annually. We're not doing as good a job. That information may be there, maybe we're doing a superb job, but I don't know it yet, and we haven't sold it to the public yet, because the critics, critics are still out there. And I'm sorry to, to be as lengthy on this, I can't, but it's been a frustration that has been in my brain for a long time, and Cecil heard me crying. Thank you.
No, I agree with you. I think you were saying, like, they may say this may cause something. I think when you have the Department of Health, for example, Cape Coral, the public yacht club, or the, the Department of Health will close it down because of E. coli bacteria. They'll have a certain level, they'll say, okay, it's closed, this will cause digestive issues, water. But I think what you're referring to is, we've all seen it for years, it's, those groups use this as a fundraising effort. It's a fundraising effort for them to get attention. They create a story, they feed it to the news media, whatever media it is, outlet, they'll run it because there's nothing else going on that week. They've been, the last six months have been COVID, you know, prime, you know, dominating the whole market, so they've been down fundraising. So you'll see that come up in the future. It's just a fundraising effort, either it's political, depends on the time of year, or it's just a fundraising effort to raise money for donations. And they'll use these efforts, and that's, those are some of the groups I said, you invite them out to Billy's Creek, when they talk about it, and they won't come with staff there with the right numbers, and they know where it's coming from. They understand upstream where it's coming from, they just don't want to report it because they can't fundraise them off of a solution. So they have to talk about it, and the media is just looking for a story to write, and then it's a no story tomorrow. It's just goes on every year, it's going to continue to go on. We'll deal with it in two years now, and we'll have a great story to talk about two years from now. So it's unfortunate, but that's, and the people are getting aware of it. I think you're starting to see people getting kind of calloused to that, too. People cry wolf so long, and after a while, it's kind of like when government can say, yes, we're doing this, and it's not coming from here, it's coming from your own backyard, and it's, it's got to, and that's why I've said for years, we need to do a better job messaging what we're doing. This is a lot of information out here, we need to put this mess out, because we can't depend on media to do that for us. We have to use our own resources. And with a $2 billion budget, I think we should have the resources to get this messaging out in, in all forms to communicate so the public understands what government's really doing, and we are actually doing something good for the community, we are doing something good for water quality. So that's, we have to be adamant to get that information out there. And nowadays with media, there's so many different sources of media, I mean, you could look at 100 different sources of media on this, and not everybody's looking at the same thing anymore. So you have to be very diverse and very strategic in messaging that, geo-fencing or somehow messaging that information out to the people that's looking for that information. If it's water, water quality, Lee County, whatever it is, you have to message that to get the information out. You actually can capture a larger audience than another media source can by doing that.
Yeah. I think you're on to something, too. We absolutely have to be able to tell our story and get that out, communication.
And once you create, you have to message it to get it out in all forms and keep it alive, by redoing, bringing it back up in either through Google or some other way of web, webinar.
Have we done something, excuse me, Betsy can answer this, so maybe, I don't need for you to take the same 45 minutes I have, but the accomplishments that Roland has made reference to and shown us up here, the TMDL credits we've done, and with some changes in the standards, though we've been able to exceed where we wanted to be at this time and that sort of thing, maybe we're not patting ourselves on the back enough or, or getting the word out that we are in fact making significant progress, and we are, we are spending big bucks every year, Roger. Yes, I acknowledge that. And if you take what the Corps is spending, what the water district is, is spending, what our adjacent counties are spending, or what Lee County is spending, we are putting a major effort here, and we have made great accomplishments. I tried this on the stump, to tell people, look, it took us 100 years to screw this system up. It's going to take a little while and a lot of money to fix it, and it'll never be what Mother Nature gave us, but maybe we're not telling the story as well, because it might soften some of those critics. So they ought to, you know, I, I don't expect we'll get a thank you letter from any of them, but somebody ought to be able to recognize every now and then that, my God, Lee County has responded. They've recognized and they've dug into the problems to see what more we can do. Because that's what's going on, and we've got millions of dollars committed to it and documented that we've already spent, such as $10 million on the Boma Project. We don't get any credit for that yet, but we've got others that we do have. Are you going to answer the question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I've asked Chris to join us at the table. Chris has really been leading our efforts for our current communications program, using all of the different social media platforms and, and other opportunities. So Chris, I hate to put you on the spot too much today, but, you know, are you able to address some of what Commissioner Man has just said?
Yes, sir. And I appreciate the opportunity to, to brief the board on some of the activities that we're taking to put this message out there. So we've been meeting with Roland and Pam Key's team, we're meeting internally to take a, a look at our website, so that we can do just that, put, put messaging out there through our existing website, using a number of different storyboard tools as. as, as you will eventually see, that kind of takes you through the history of the projects and some of the existing projects, some of the new projects, and as well as be providing visual maps and references for, for folks to look at. In addition to that, we are also looking at our social media platforms, which would allow us an opportunity to post information via Facebook Live or through videos. We've done a number of videos over the last number of months here on any number of things, but we are looking to produce of which, you know, you've seen some of the drone footage in today's presentation, but being able to, to highlight all the, the water quality project that Roland's team is currently working on right now, and provide a database or a, a resource for citizens to go to so that they can get updates and they can actually visually see those projects and the impacts that they're having on our water quality program here. We are also working with our outside marketing communication team, which is pushing the envelope, on doing direct email. We have started to do a lot more advertising on our emails as well as our websites and our social media so that people who are interested in these types of topics can sign up. And we do email blasts through Constant Contact, which will provide, you know, more specific information targeted on very specific projects and very specific outcomes. We do a monthly, actually, two times a month, we do a newsletter now to citizens who have signed up for that newsletter. So we will be taking opportunities to put this information out in our ongoing newsletters as we have information to tell. And that, we'll continue to obviously work with, with, with our internal team to put together media events and press releases as we have information to share. So there's a lot of different moving parts to this, and we couldn't agree with you more that, that we do have an opportunity here to tell our story, all of the successes, all of the projects, and, and provide a history for, for citizens here in, in the community to understand how all of these different things tie together for overall water quality issues.
Thank you for that. And please understand, if I sound in any way like I was critical of our crack staff activities, I apologize for that. Because when I read these advocacy groups still being critical of virtually anything that happens or doesn't happen, I'm frustrated, because I know there's a lot of good work being done here. But Joe Lunch bucket on the street, he still doesn't know the difference between blue-green algae and red tide. And he thinks it's caused by the same stuff. So our job is just, we're not done yet, but keep up your good work.
Commissioner, I think this is one of those things, we just have to keep hammering away at it. I, you know, we could, all of us probably name the different advocacy groups that spread misinformation, or are, they're either doing that, or...
Unnecessary panic, premature wealth.
Sure. You know, you could, on any given day, you can, you can go dip some water out of the Estero River, and depending on the time of year...
Blue, whatever you want, yeah.
You know, and, you know, one of those mobile home parks down there, you know, depending on how many toilets are flushed in that day will dictate what the water quality is like at any, you know, given time of the year. And so, you know, and that, and those make for sensational stories. I don't know whether we're going to conquer that, but, you know, you mentioned earlier something about, you know, we've got the MPO, we've got the LPA, we've got these different, different organizations. You know, perhaps we can have a conversation about a, a multi-jurisdictional organization that's modeled after something like the MPO, the LPA, the, you know, things that are created into law, but could be created locally. I don't think we've ever really talked about that, but, you know, I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea, but we can, you know, we can have those conversations.
Well, that's where the chairman, I think, was headed. And I, if you did nothing but the cities within Lee County and Lee County, and that there is an MPO-type model for some type of a quarterly, let's get together and see what you guys are doing. Let's hear what your staff is, can brag about in ours, and how can we do this together? And then we can ask them, okay, Cape Coral, what are you doing with Roland? How many times you guys on the phone together? But it sounds like you're doing the same thing. Why aren't we talking? Maybe we, staff could play with some model on those. I like your idea, Mr. Chair. And I like your enthusiasm.
Talk about it every year.
All right, Roland?
John, if you would hush up, the rest of us could get a word in.
So what do we test for our lab? Obviously, we test for nutrients, phosphorus, nitrogen, and many forms of those. Bacteria, both E. coli and nitric oxide, depending on if you're fresher saltwater, dissolved oxygen, metals, and many more. In fact, we test over 46 parameters for the tests, our samples we collect. 141 locations, so every creek and stream, pretty much that goes to Kalu Sahachi, Estero, or Charla Harbor, we've got a monthly, at least a monthly sample on a determine, in many cases, 30 years of data. 94, that creates about 94,000 tests per year. We obviously compare those to state water quality standards. We have a certified lab, so the QA QC is there. And that's very important, to make sure that the samples are handled properly and proper procedures are taken, chain of custody and all that, so. So moving on from that water quality, if it's impaired, the total maximum daily load is when a river, lake, estuary, or spring does not meet the state water quality standards, the department determines a water quality restoration goal, and the TMDL is the restoration goal. By definition, it's the maximum amount of pollutant that a water body can assimilate without exceeding water quality standards. So basically, that's the threshold. You're not going to have pure water, but to a certain extent, more than that may cause problems, like algae blooms, or poxia, or something to the water column that, that would cause problems. So TMDLs address a specific impairment. You could have, actually have multiple TMDLs for one water body. You could have a creek that is impaired for nitrogen, phosphorus, bacteria, and copper, and they'd all have separate TMDLs for it and, and means to, to clean it up. This is a list, comprehensive list of the TMDLs that are active in Lee County, just pointing out those three that we're addressing here, Hendrick Creek and Imperial River. Their actual impairment was for low dissolved oxygen, but they've determined that the cause of pollutant was too much nitrogen, too much total nitrogen. And Kalu Sahachi at the bottom there, in that case, it was too much chlorophyll. And again, the cause of pollutant was too much nitrogen. Nitrogen being a limiting nutrient in saltwater environment. So if you have a TMDL, next step is a base management action plan. That's basically the blueprint for restoring the impaired waters. You're basically trying to show how you're going to reduce those pollutant loads down to the total maximum daily load threshold. Represents a comprehensive set of strategies, including permit limits on wastewater facilities, like we mentioned earlier, urban and ag best management practices, conservation programs like our 2020 program, financial services and assistance available, like grants, which is great for us. And these are broad-based plans that are developed to, to reduce the loading. Each stakeholder, basically, we submit our projects to DEP, and they evaluate them, they give us credits based on their merit, and, or in the new model, obviously. And so this is something that's been adopted by the Secretary DEP, and it's, it's enforceable. This is the map showing the BMAPs, the shaded area, the water sheds, the crosshatch area, there are actually specific water segments that are impaired. And so a little bit about how we got here, the proactive approach you've taken. The TMDLs were adopted in '08 and '09, the BMAP in 2012. Now those, the TMDLs were adopted are based on water quality assessments back in 2004. So everything that we are built since then, we got credit for. So the county's invested over $60 million in projects and programs since 19, or since 2004 to get us where we're at. Purchased over 30,000 acres of land, and many of those are water quality features. And you've also proactively investigated the bacteria source contamination. You've invested $267,000 in Norfolk Myers, and you've got a budget of $645,000 for our countywide effort. So that's very significant. To harp on that a little bit more, I mean, Norfolk Myers, we just completed the second, second year. Countywide, we're just, we're initiating that. We're, this week, we're testing October sampling. Conservation 2020, you had the 30,000 acres celebration this year. And what's really important is public outreach, fertilizer ordinance, pet waste. That's source control, that's the best bang for the buck. You stop it at the source, it's going to save us for down the road. And the harmful algal bloom response, we have contractors on place. If we have, suffer a bloom like we had in 2018, they can mobilize and, and respond in, in quick fashion. Projects underway, this one's the Yellow Fever Creek and Gator Slough. We're getting ready to go out to bid. This is a joint project with, see if Cape Coral, exit really fast there. Deep Lagoon, this is a 2020 parcel. Deep Lagoon had high nutrient concentrate, nitrogen concentrations, and we're working with the lands that we own there and putting in water control structures that's under design. Bob Jane's Preserve, what a great parcel purchase that was, not only for restoration of flowways, but all those ag fields that are no longer used represent opportunities for water quality features. We just completed the feasibility study, we're getting ready to go to design on that one. This is the Powell Creek Bypass Old Bridge Water Quality Project. This is old spoil site that we inherited from FDOT. They never used it, but it sits right next to Powell Creek Drainage Canal. It's a cell there, we can just pump, pump water into it, treat it, and put it back out. So it's great.
Orient, orient me again with Powell Creek. Where is that Norfolk Myers?
That's old, that's old bridge. So the old bridge that crossed Kalu Sahachi, and that's a canal.
Where's US 41, where's the interstate?
Oh, 41 would be, old 41 is over here somewhere.
Bay Shore Road.
Bay Shore is up here somewhere, 75 is way out here. So it's below Bay Shore, Elsie Eze, up around here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And this Kalu Sahachi. We're looking at the power line easement Norfolk Myers. Not only does it serve for power, but it's also a collector of a lot of water and different water sheds, and we're looking at some parcels in there for strategic location of water quality projects. And Lakes Park, you see at the upper part of the, the screen is the restoration work we did in northern part of Lake, Lakes Park, and we're going to start looking at the western portion next. Parcel property in Buckingham, FGCU property, an old ditch that wraps around this property. We're going to widen it for flood protection purposes, but also put in water control structures and restore those for water quality benefits. That's under design, or actually permitting now. And this last one, Canal L3, it's a city-owned canal, unincorporated Lee County, just west of 41. Light Industrial goes into this, runs behind Sam Galloway. We're providing some new catch basins and water collection and treatment in that canal before it goes out to Whiskey Creek. So moving on to future focus. Obviously, our current BMAP obligations are met with our completed and planned projects, but we would recommend the county to continue their proactive policy. Target impaired waters, the source identification is key. That's where your highest return is. There's only so many filter marshes, only so many lands are strategically located throughout the county that are near poor water quality that you can build large reservoirs or filter marshes. So go after the sources, biggest return. We're going to evaluate the septic conversion alternatives as a result of the bacteria assessment, and you're going to see a future workshop on that. And I believe that's in January. And then also, the Senate Bill 712, we've been tracking that. They created the Blue Green Algae Task Force. We attend their meetings. They came up with a lot of recommendations so far. Many of those are already embedded in our BMAP, or BMAP for Kalu Sahachi. And of course, we're always going to go after grants. Every project we go, we build, we're going after grants. We've got 50% most cost share of most of them. Nine and a half million dollars of grant funding we've got since 2004 on our projects. So last slide. Going back to the question, should staff receive the current work plan adjusting the water quality impairments? And are there any other issues you would like to address or add? Again, we're going to come back, not only in November for flood mitigation, but we're also coming back in January for the results of Norfolk Myers septic study and septic to sewer alternatives analysis, so that's it.
I all may just continue with what you're doing, with whatever input you've tried, we've been able to glean out of this today. And I just had a thought while we were bringing this in for a landing. Instead of getting a bunch of us together, like the county and, and six cities, sitting down in the same room and having certain elected officials monopolize the conversation, it would probably be better if, I'm thinking out loud with you, a day-long workshop of staff to ask the questions. What are we, what are our individual goals, and how well are we working together? Are we duplicating? Let them do that first, and then report back to us individually as to maybe what's the next step, or their own suggestions from such a workshop as to what we could be doing better. Or they may come back to us and say, look, we have found that we are doing a hell of a job already. But, but let this start at the staff level rather, because we'll monopol, I'll monopolize it, others will monopolize, trying to show how I'm the really water fighter here. I want to do good. Just thinking out loud again.
I hear what you're saying, and I think it's a really valid concern. One thought I had, I like the idea of the staff and the technical people getting together first and kind of doing an inventory of what everyone's doing and putting together the story to tell to the elected folks. Like, here's what, here's what's happening, and here's what's happening in every area. And if they can boil that down into a brief, digestible presentation that we would all get, I think is great. This may come as a surprise to you. I have, I have watched some city council meetings from time to time, and you wouldn't believe this, but every now and then, they're not so charitable to the county commissioners.
No.
And so my thought is, if we were all in the room together, at least they could say whatever they want to say in front of us, and then we could talk about it together, to see if they really have the right perception of what's going on.
If we're, it'd be easier to understand each other if we're focused on water projects.
Right, yeah.
And if we've narrowed down...
And we're all working from the same knowledge base, you know? Here's our staff, they just presented to us exactly what's going on. Now we're all working from the same educational level, and then we could talk to each other about what's going on. And it doesn't, I'm, I don't think it has to be as regular as the MPO by any means. Like, I was thinking of once a year, or maybe twice a year sync up.
I'm thinking that, that's, I think that's more better than, than a quarterly, where we kind of force an agenda...
Right.
And try to come up with something to talk about, as opposed to, let's let the staff say, the ones that are doing this every day anyway and have been instructed by their policymakers to be doing this, how well are we working with our buddies around the county here? And then get together a broader group, once a year. Maybe just one time for now, who knows?
Make sure you get the technical folks pointed in the, the right direction, or whatever. You know, I mean, I know they're in the right direction, but we'll have an understanding, for sure.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I thank you for this. And staff, I really thank you for this. And I think this has been a good meeting, and I apologize, but I, you just, you brought the right meeting and the right subject together with my frustration. So I apologize for dominating the conversation here. But I very much appreciate my colleagues' comments. Cecil, thank you for your concern. And John, you in particular, yes, yeah, thank you.
Brian, I have just one more question. Probably the topic that I've been, in my one year here, is septic sewer. I know it's been mentioned here. We got a call, Roger and I went down and met with the village. We brought our information down on septic sewer. They had theirs. It was a very cooperative meeting. We had a chance to look at what was, what we had, what they had, how it gets merged together. My question, Roger, maybe on that, is where does that go from here? It was another look see, and maybe the things that have, I'm certainly not aware, which could be the case. But the question is, that seemed to be an issue that's top of mind for everybody. It takes time, it takes money, it takes patience and stuff like this. And I guess we all have a hot button, you know, me is, how do we share that information? How do we establish a priority? How do we try making some progress in moving to that, that thing? And I'm just asking a question more seldom than anything else.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, I don't think I can give you a very satisfactory answer this afternoon, but let us, let's revisit that issue and see what's transpired since the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously a key in the future going here. That, to me, was a satisfying meeting, because we were talking collectively together, sharing information, a lot of what we touched on today.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see how we advance that. So whatever moniker of progress we can make, we can hang our head on that.
Well, Roger, I, I heard, I heard three things today. I definitely heard the, the BOMA project is something we would like to have some follow-up information on. The, you know, the Technical Advisory Committee and, and some sort of summit, maybe, with the municipalities to get a, get... maybe with the municipalities to get, get all of us on the same page and then, and then I heard, you know, communication, just the continued efforts to help tell the story of the good things that we're doing. That's fantastic news that we've accomplished with this new information, we've accomplished what the B-map set out to accomplish and I think that's a good news story for everybody.
Yes, sir, thank you. And that, that parallels my notes as well, so we'll, if that works for, for all of you, we'll, we'll report back when we have some more information for you.
Good to do. All right.
Thanks, sir.
Any other business, Mr. County Manager?
No, sir. Thank you, Roland, good job.
Good workshop, we're adjourned.
You know, that's where...